Is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be live streamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. Webinar ID is 831-58911735 and the required password is 361651. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Do you have any arrow?
Here.
Mr. Denise?
Here.
Mr. Gallo?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Ms. Jansen?
Here.
Mr. Kuzmarski? That was a doctor.
It's okay.
Oh, I said Ms. Jansen twice. Dr. Morton?
Here. Adequate notice of the agenda for this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on August 27th, 2025 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. Copeland is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do not require an exact session today, so let us move on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. All right, any motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Copeland. We are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forth at this time, a motion to close the meeting to the public, Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Copeland. All right, we do not have a Mawa student representative report at this time, but we will very soon at our next meeting when school resumes. All right, Dr. Dittorow, superintendent.
Yes, thank you. We have a number of things that we would like to highlight for the board and the community as we have discussed in a number of board meetings. Our internship and externship program has been underway. We've received great feedback for not only the students, but parents, and also the companies in which that hosted our students. So Dr. Fair and I are going to take a couple of minutes to spotlight just some of the internships and externships that took place. As I was speaking at instructional the other day, what we're going to do is we're going to give the board the date of the celebration of internships and externships that happens in the fall, that we invite all of the companies in and our interns and externs do capstone presentations summarizing their experience and what they've learned through this internship and externship. So the first thing, summer internships and externship program. This summer, Mawa Public Schools proudly hosted our 2025 internship and externship program, providing students with meaningful, hands-on learning experiences across a variety of fields. Through these placements, students engage directly with professional environments, develop valuable workplace skills, and build connections that will support their academic and career goals, reflecting our commitment to bridging classroom learning with real-world experiences. As you can see here, and we spoke at instructional about this, if you remember, for board members who were on the board about three years ago, we started this with three externships. And Mr. Pascal and his team worked extremely hard in getting the word out and educating our community and our students about the value. He also engaged the community in eliciting interest in being a host for these learning experiences. This year, we had over 60 placements, so it went from three to 60. Actually, it went from three to 25 to 60 over the past three years with 33 externships and 32 internships.
So this evening, we just wanted to highlight a few of the externships and internships from this past summer. Here you'll see Riley, who had the opportunity to shadow at Valley Health as part of our biotech research and health sciences career pathway. During her externship, Riley observed medical procedures, assisted with patient care tasks, and supported administrative operations, gaining firsthand experience in healthcare and research practices. You can see Riley on the right-hand side actually observing a surgery. Yeah, right? Incredible, right?
I couldn't do that. And this is Gabby. Gabby had the opportunity to shadow at Barclays Center in Brooklyn, New York, where she learned about marketing and ticket sales as part of our business administration career pathway. Gabby participated in reviewing promotional strategies, observing ticket operations, assisting with event day logistics, and exploring customer engagement initiatives, having an inside glimpse into the fast-paced world of event management and marketing.
And here you'll see Mandy, who had the opportunity to shadow at Overpet Creek Animal Hospital. During her externship, Mandy observed veterinary procedures, assisted with animal care and handling, supported front desk operations, and helped maintain patient records, building a strong foundation for her future in veterinary medicine.
This is Catherine. Catherine interned at Rutgers Health Cancer Institute of New Jersey at University Hospital, where she observed medical procedures, prepared patient charts, assisted with check-ins and organizing imaging and biopsy orders. Catherine also supported the surgical team by setting up medical equipment and supplies, developing clinical skills and confidence that will serve her in advanced healthcare studies.
Aiden interned in the finance department at Wonder Meets, where he summarized data analysis to create a budgeting plan for the next fiscal year, developing analytical strategic planning skills that will certainly benefit him in any business setting in the future.
And this is Chase. Chase had the opportunity to shadow at Cisco as part of our engineering and technology pathway. During his externship, Chase observed engineering processes, assisted with technical projects, and learned about network systems and technology solutions, gaining hands-on exposure to the field of engineering and technology in a professional setting.
Casey interned at Lystritz Advanced Technologies Corp., where he was able to verify the specifications for several pump parts using a blueprint. Through his internship, Casey experienced firsthand engineering design, precision measurement, and technical problem solving.
This is Nicholas. In exploring the business administration and technical career pathway, Nicholas interned at CLC Landscape Design, where he worked on various planning projects and explored the business aspect of landscape design with a project manager and sales team. Through his internship, Nicholas was able to gain experience both on the technical and administrative sides of a growing business. No pun intended.
And lastly, we have Tanishi, who is a part of the biotechnical technology research and health science pathway, where she interned at the county of Bergen Health Department, focusing on public health by creating informational brochures and giving a presentation on nutrition to staff representing different divisions, gaining practical experience in health education and community outreach. You'll see here we have just a range. I know that the board has seen this list because it's been board-approved over the past few months, but we've had students interning and externing everywhere from, obviously, doctors' offices to the University of Pennsylvania, internally through our counseling department here and here at Central Office. They've interned at banks, Movado Group, obviously, Valley Hospital, local restaurants. So our students have seen and been able to shadow in a range of really cool potential career pathways for that. So we thank all of our partners, and obviously, as Dr. Dittorow shared, once we have the date solidified in, I believe it's late October, we will certainly shadow the board.
The last part of my presentation, we spoke about this at our board retreat. I was able to speak with our administrative team at our most recent administrative retreat that took place on Monday. The goals that you see here are really grounded in not only our 2020 to 2025 strategic plan, but as you all know, on September 17th, our 25 to 30 strategic plan will be presented. So as you can see, we have a curriculum and instruction goal and a finance facilities goal. That does not mean that we are not going to remain committed to communication, which has been a goal in the past, but our curriculum and instruction goal is something that we're going to continue to focus on our NJTSS tier of intervention work. That is something that we focused our attention during our administrative retreat and is an ongoing focus throughout our work this year. That, in summary, is identifying proficiency levels for each and every one of our learners and make sure that we're not only just providing foundational support, but we're also extending their learning for wherever they are on the proficiency continuum. Our goal number two is our finance and facilities goal. We are going to maintain our commitment to ensuring that our facilities are up to our Mawa standards across all of the schools. We've talked at length at previous meetings along the lines of our forecasting in a number of different avenues, whether it's our roofing, HVAC, windows, and much, much more. And we would remain committed to is ensuring that that focus continues this year and also, as we shared at the back end of last year, and will continue to share back to school nights and throughout the fall, we are focused on educating our community on an opportunity of referendum. That information will be coming out throughout the fall and into the winter, and most of that information will take place between January and March with a March vote. That's an opportunity for our community to come out and share their feelings on if we should move in that direction. So those are our two goals for the district. As you all know, there's plenty of other things that are going to be happening throughout the district on a daily basis, but those are our goals that we're going to be focusing on this year.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dr. Dittorow. Dr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening? Or without the part?
It's very brief. I just, I'm really excited. Hopefully, we have some more members who can join us for our opening day ceremony. Instead of starting off the day, we will be having our opening day ceremony start at 11:30 on September 2nd, and then we'll go into our first year of our opening day barbecue. So I'm excited to see everyone. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like board members to let you know if they?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. Mr. Lamb, do you have a report for us this evening?
Sure, just briefly, just wanted to thank Greg Romero, our facilities team, for all the summer upgrades they did. Pritchard, our vendor for cleaning, the buildings are in like the last mile of being ready for opening. They look great. The roofing project at the high school, although there's still workers there, the roof is secure and it's not a safety risk, they're just finishing up final pieces. And the same for the rooftop unit at Joyce Kilmer School. That project is finished, just some punch list items, but it's not a safety issue and the building is ready. And as soon as we get to go ahead, the Joyce Kilmer HVAC will be put on. And the great news for those two projects is we are going to get about $600,000 back in rod grant funding from the state of New Jersey. So thanks to Greg and our cleaning vendors for a very busy but productive summer.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you to Greg and his team and all the staff for, you know, getting us ready to go. Thank you very much. Okay, my report this evening.
I have a slide. Excellent. So a couple of things on the president's report this evening. First, we're going to just kind of bit similar, at least the first one, to the district goals. We also come up with our board goals during our annual retreat, which was August this year, and the first one, again, keeping in with the district goal as well. So successful planning and execution of a district referendum. Again, as we've been mentioning, talking about, and much more information to continue and follow, just to support and help the administration with successful planning, communication, and implementation of a district referendum. Again, to enhance facilities or programming and foster transparency, stakeholder agreement, and fiscal responsibility. Most importantly, we're keeping always in mind fiscal responsibility. I think our Finance and Facilities Committee needs to be given a lot of kudos. They're working very hard at looking at all the factors involved in going possibly to a referendum, so I thank Mr. Gallo and his committee for your persistence and keeping that in mind for us and the taxpayers. Number two, again, it's pretty much one of the more important things that we do as a board. We keep needing to review policies and regulations. Our policy committee under Mr. Denise as our chair does a very good job of that. This year, we reviewed, I think, 1,000 and 7,000, is that correct, Mr. Denise? Yeah. So again, for the upcoming year, we're going to move on to 2,000 and 8,000. And we'll continue to do this to keep with current practice and protocols that are required to effectively run a school district. So again, these are our two goals, and that's what we're going to work on for this year and will update as needed. All right, number two, I know we discussed, and I realize that people might not have their papers in front of them for the board self-evaluation. Do people have that, need copies, do not have? Okay. I can do something else. Do you want to print this? Can we print this real quick, or you think it's too much? Yeah. Okay. I realize that half of the people might have it. All right, so let me move on to something else while we're printing. Because we did our board self-evaluation and reflection, we just mentioned it at the last meeting, but then we decided that we would talk about it at this meeting. So I just want to have everyone make sure you have an opportunity. Hopefully, I'm sure you studied it carefully and reviewed it, and we can have a productive conversation. Robust conversation. All right, the other thing I just, I had drafted a welcome back that we put on the website. Dr. Dittorow had sent one out a couple of weeks ago, and so I changed ours also. So I just thought I would read that, so I'll take a minute to read that while we're, while we have this little segue. On behalf, so this is your welcome back. On behalf of the trustees of the Mawa Board of Education, I would like to personally welcome you and your students back to school for the 2025-2026 academic year. We hope that you had a restful and recharged summer, and you're excited for the start of a new school year. We have worked diligently over the summer to ensure that our schools are ready for our students, staff, and families to return. As a board, we have been working on several things for this upcoming school year and would like to highlight a few of the important ones. Number one, our new five-year strategic plan, which will be officially rolled out in September at our next meeting. And this was titled "The Flight of the Thunderbird." So again, this was a collective effort with our community, and there were meetings, et cetera. Our short and long-term focus continues to be on ensuring high-level curriculum and instruction, strengthening community connections, maintaining and enhancing our facilities, and continuing to support both social and emotional well-being of all our students. Secondly, our board goals that were developed, so I already reviewed those. And third, just to highlight that, you know, this past year, again, going into a new year, our board was recognized by the New Jersey School Boards Association as a board of distinction within Bergen County. It's really an important achievement, and it maintains our strong commitment to effective governance and continuous improvement through training. So we encourage you and your students to remain connected and explore all the variety of things that our district offers academically, socially, and through sports and extracurricular activities. We encourage you to attend one of our board meetings. Please check out the schedule on the website. And we welcome you to share your feedback with us through board emails. We are committed to support and work collaboratively with Dr. Dittorow and the entire administrative team to ensure that your students receive a high-quality education while feeling safe and comfortable in our school buildings. Good luck and have an amazing school year. So that was my little welcome back. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
And, all right, so let's talk about the self-reflection before, and copy, we can just have a copy, right? But it is like 12-page. I'm sorry, a little so on our part, on my part.
I'll imprint it and then I'll.
Yeah, there you go. You can all pull it up on your phone, and I think I sent it out by chance.
It'll be yours.
I, all right. Let's talk about how we want to discuss it. Let's do that instead. Because one of the things that we are often sort of, you know, one of the issues that sometimes comes up is we don't discuss enough as a board in public session and talking about these things. So I'd like to encourage all of us to go around and talk about, in terms of these board goals, one thing that you think is a strength of our board and one thing that you think we could work on. Because again, we don't share sometimes, so I'd like to have everyone share, because if I ask, everyone's going to just sit quietly. So I'm putting you on the spot, 100%. And maybe Ms. Jansen would like to start? What is one strength, in your opinion, of our board and something that we could improve on?
I think a strength of ours is that we always put the student and our community first and that we make sure we achieve excellence and make sure we're in compliance. And I think we have very good, healthy discussions that have multiple solutions to make sure we're constantly meeting the requirements, but also thinking outside the box in how we truly compete so that our kids can leave here well-positioned for whatever path they choose, right? And we, I think all of us have different backgrounds, which brings strength to what those futures could be, which is a variety of things. So I really enjoy that because, look, I work in court, right? Everybody works differently, and I like hearing all about those different choices.
Excellent, thank you. And something you think we could improve?
I think that there's, the committees each do a really good job on their work within committee. I think the minutes that we're beginning to deepen the conversations that happen and be shared gives us all better insights that we can pick up. So that, you know, if we're swapping spots, if Mike can't go and I can go, we can pick up by looking at the minutes and participating in those conversations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jansen. Mr. Hughes?
So a great strength of ours, I think, is enhancing the Mawa experience. I think we saw that during superintendent and Dr. Fair's report with the internship and externship program. I mean, that was just, that was wild. I don't think I would have ever seen a Mawa high school student in their teens watching a surgery or getting that hands-on experience for business, administration, whatever it is. Like, that is truly hands-on experience that's going to benefit them in the long run. So great job on that. I think continuing the work with the internship, externship, and enhancing our Mawa experience is definitely something we'll continue to do. Something that we can enhance for ourselves and do better at. I agree with Ms. Jansen. I think better communication with the committees would be great. Also, maybe we can expand that towards the public, maybe let the public in a little bit more on what each committee's been working on and, you know, get maybe a little bit more feedback from the public on what the committees are working on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Any thoughts on, we talk a lot about communication. Any thoughts on, maybe we think about that a little bit of how, because we talk about it, but maybe one or two specifics sometimes of how do we perhaps do that better?
Well, I think a great opportunity could be another newsletter. We sent out a newsletter last year, got great feedback. Maybe we could just have a smaller newsletter saying, hey, these are what the committees for the Board of Education were working on, and here are some highlights. Feel free to give us feedback. Scan this QR code right here or email us at this email location.
So committee highlights, perhaps?
Yeah, committee highlights.
If I could add on to this point, too, engagement from the teachers, right, on what they would like to see too. Because I know we talk about community, and we hear from the administration, but hearing from a select few every now and then could represent a different.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Denise?
Yeah, just building on what Chris said, maybe have a separate, on the website, maybe each committee has a separate page, just for transparency. So what we do well is collaborate. Collaborate between board members, collaborate between board members and administration. I think we all work well together. We're a good team, because we have a, we have, the focus is on the students, and that's always been our main objective, is to enhance the student experience.
Great, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Mr. Gallo?
So I agree with all my colleagues. I think our collaboration and support of our individual endeavors in a governing body and along with our partnership with the district leadership team at all levels is a real strength of ours. And as many of us who've gone to Atlantic City, we run into board members from other places, and man, can they complain.
They're not all the same.
And I, my personal experience, and I think the experience of all of us, is it's so much different than complaining and whining and being overwhelmed by problems. We're never overwhelmed by problems. We have problems, just like any other district, but we sort of engage them directly and head on. And I think that inures to our benefit over the long run in a way that, you know, we can continue to make progress. You see, like, as Chris mentioned, the internship program. We have problems, but guess what? We're also expanding our internship program from three to 62 kids. It's fantastic. So we don't let the little stuff get in our way. We have a leadership team that's focused on strategic stuff, the important stuff, but also drilling down to our individual students, like the district goal of using the tiered, the NJTSS intervention for tier three, two, and three students. So every single person in our district, every single student in our district is having their educational needs addressed. Nobody is forgotten. We value every single student. It's not just a theoretical, you know, the kids, it's a kid in a class, in a situation, wherever they are, you know, learning journey, and we address that. Communication, I think we do a lot of communicating. I think the fact that nobody comes for our meetings is both a good sign and a bad sign, right?
I've invited them now, personally. Officially.
It's a sign that the public, to me, it's a sign that the public must have some faith and trust in the district leadership team and the board and the overall operation of the district. They go, hey, things are running pretty well, my students are being attended to in classes, they're offered a tremendous amount of variety of extracurricular opportunities, things are going pretty well. However, there's always more news to report. Like, how many, if we were to take a poll tomorrow of 100 Mawa citizens, how many will know how many kids want to join our internship and externship program? Probably none. Even though, for those individual students, it's a remarkable life-changing experience, and it didn't happen overnight, didn't happen by accident. It was a purposeful, intentional endeavor of the district to put that program into motion. And it's just one of many things we do. And we do a lot of this, we do a lot of communicating, celebrate those things. And it always disappoints me that, that it's not getting out to every single person. Every single person out there should be cheering our students on, cheering our district leadership team on in terms of the work they're doing. It's remarkable compared to other places that, in New Jersey and among our neighboring communities, I'm not disparaging Ramsey, but I would be allowed to if that were here. We do a remarkable job, and it's a total package. It's the entire continuum of the management and governance of the district that is distinctive and unique to Mawa, that when you go talk to your colleagues at board conference, they don't have. I have not found those people, so, sorry if I'm a little slow, but I think we do a darn good job.
It's okay, Mr. Gallo. We appreciate your wisdom. Appreciate your wisdom. All right. All right, well, thank you very much. Mr. Copeland?
Just say ditto.
What he said. No. I agree with everything everyone said already and I'll just tag on a little bit. The other strength that I have, that I see is the level of respect that we have, not just for each other. We all come from different backgrounds, we all come from different beliefs. But at the end of the day, when we walk in here, we have a level of respect for each other and we respect each other's opinions. We also have a level of respect for our admin team. We respect what they do on a daily basis, but they also show us a lot of respect back as well. They allow us to challenge their thoughts. They allow us to challenge what they're doing in a respectful way and they do listen. So I think it's important to point that out as well. From a improvement standpoint, I think we touched on communication. I'm not going to beat that dead horse again. But I think, I think the collaboration, as, as Chris and John mentioned, with the community, getting the community more involved in what we're doing. And we've talked a lot about doing different things and we, we've tried different things over the years, whether it's, you know, coffee with this person or whatever, open houses, things like that, Thunderbird, whatever that was, Thunderbird Talk, the strategic, yeah, Thunderbird Talk, the strategic plan meetings, just getting that out there. And I agree with Mike in the sense that, you know, we need to communicate what we're doing. And I brought this up in the past. I think we are, I think we're doing a good job. It's just a matter of, is, is the message getting to the people that need, need, need to get to, right? And when you get the message out to these people, are they reading it? Do they really care? We're in a community of 26,000 people, you know, and how many students do we have in the district? Three? Just about 3,000? Twenty, yeah, about 3,000 or so. So it's a very small percentage of the community that's actually in the school system. But it impacts everyone in the community. So, the challenge that we always will have is how do we get that message out? And when we do do it, will people actually engage with it? So that, I think that's going to be an ongoing challenge, not just for this year, but moving forward as communication channels change and, you know, we, we adopt new technologies and, you know, we've moved away from smoke signals and maybe we need to bring those back, I don't know. But, but I think those are challenges that we'll, we'll have to, yeah.
We'll have the AI, right? Thank you, Mr. Copeland. And as Chair of Community Relations, Mr. Copeland, you can introduce those ideas and, and encourage us to do things collaboratively with the community. That's up to you. All right, thank you very much. Ms. Davinero?
It's hard not to like repeat everything that everybody said already. I think when we talk about collaboration and being able to work together, it's definitely a pride point for ours. I think we have to do a really good job of not holding each other accountable, holding administrations, schools, et cetera accountable, holding ourselves accountable, which is really important. We also come from very different backgrounds and we don't allow that to get in the way. So I think a lot of time when you have people who come from different backgrounds, different thought processes, different experience, occasionally that could get, be a sticking point that you get stuck on. We, as a district, don't let that deter the progress that we're making and I think that's something really special about us also. We have a, a large board of nine and we always find a way to get to the same point. So we always have that open conversation with back to respect us and we respect what everybody else's opinions are, but we always come full circle to what is the most important thing that we're doing? How do we continue to protect Mala students and move them forward? And we never allow that difference of background to become a sticking point. And that's something that we really appreciate about being here. When we talk about, you know, communication and things that we can do better, we do a lot of inviting the community to us. I think that over the next year, it's really important to bring us to the community as well. So we attend a ton of events. A lot of us are parents or alumni of the district. We're at those events already and I think that's important. But making sure that we're visible, not just as parents or residents, but also as board members when we're out at different events that we, people find us approachable, that they can talk to us, et cetera. And I know that nobody really wants to do that. I've done it myself, I'm adding something to my kids and I'm like, I don't want to be a board member right now, I just kind of want to be a mom at this event or whatever it is. But also, any community events that are going on, et cetera, I think it's nice that we are in attendance and that we're seen as part of the community. I just think it's important that the community feel comfortable with us and know that we're super involved. And when we're making decisions that affect the entire community, just not the school community, those people also feel that we're in the know and are aware of what's going on in town, in different programs or areas or whatever it may be. I think we do a fantastic job of inviting the community to us, regardless if they're here or if they're reading communications, et cetera. So how do we go a step further to make sure that they're there also?
Great, thank you very much. So, let's just quickly look at this. I think we've pretty much highlighted a lot of the information here. I want to say that the two things that strike me are our ability to collaborate and build consensus and I think that is truly one of the greatest strengths of this board and it's a pleasure to work with each and every one of you in doing that because I think we're a very supportive group and we can come to each other with things. The other thing I think that is a real strength is the relationship that we've developed with our administrative team. I mean, Dr. Dettoro, we go way back, but, you know, even this internship/externship program, Mr. Gallo will remind me that this is something that came from New Jersey School Boards Association. Many years ago, we attended a workshop, one of these seminars, and we went to, you know, Dr. Dettoro and said, hey, this was, I think, Northern Valley, or Northern, no, it was Northern Valley, I think, regional, right? Yeah, the pathways, but also this whole internship/externship because they were, they had this whole program set up. And we went to Dr. Dettoro and said, hey, can you look into this? And I think, and this was when he was Director of Instruction and Curriculum. So, again, when we go to our individual, when we go to Dr. Fair with something, we go to Ms. Rizzo with something, Mr. Lamb, and now Ms. Kraft, they listen. They listen, they say, okay, let's, let's look at it and see if we can do it. And a lot of these ideas have now become actual things that we've accomplished. So, again, I think that's another great strength of ours. In terms of our further work, I think we've all highlighted it and will continue to do so. The other idea that was interesting is, you know, this committee thing. Maybe occasionally if we have someone missing at a committee meeting, someone else can come sit in on a meeting. We've recently started doing that between finance and facilities and community relations. And I think that's been going well, to know what's going on in different committees. So, that might be an idea that we can implement. So the self-evaluation, is there other stuff that you guys think we need to discuss? Is there any areas that you were, when you were filling it out, that you had some particular concerns or questions or you wanted to share further? Open invitation to do that. Ms. Jansen?
I just had one thing. We were talking about communication a lot in all of our comments and similar to the concept of no one's here, right? And people are reading what's, what's important to them. I think most of the district, they think things are going well, so they're not looking for things. So, we want to communicate, but I also think it's challenging to find the thing that lights up for people, right, to kind of draw their eye and let them know. They're not going to read, be able to retain everything in every newsletter. So coming back to like the highlight moment, that, that's really, I think, the gold of what we can do, to continue to get highlights, so it's hard.
All right, so is Mr. Gallo anything that you'd like to share? I think this is helpful for us to go around. All right, thank you. I think we're, we're done, let's move on. And thank you for printing that. Thank you, Ms. Kraft, for printing. All right, Board Committee reports. Mr. Copeland?
I'll keep this brief. I'll keep this brief. Community Relations met last week. I sent an email out to all board members, which is some highlights. I do want to highlight the talking points that I sent to everyone. Please take a moment, actually more than a moment, to read them, be very, very familiar with them. This is about the referendum. Our work in the community relations committee right now is going to be highly focused on the referendum. Also, take a look at the timeline. As Dr. Dettoro mentioned earlier, a lot of our work will be in January, February, and leading to the vote in March. More details will follow on that. But please, over the next couple of months, as board members, we, we have a responsibility to answer questions appropriately. So please look at those talking points and be very, very familiar with them. Along those same lines, on September 29th, the district will be holding a state of the facility meeting at 630 at a location to be determined. This will be set up similar to the strategic plan meetings. We'll be inviting the community in to have a voice in the process. So we talk about getting more community involvement. This would be a great opportunity for the community to come in to kind of voice their thoughts and opinions on where we are from a facility standpoint specifically. We won't be looking at curriculum or anything like that, but this is strictly facilities. And this will be a, kind of a continuation of the strategic plan meetings because we did touch on facilities a lot in those meetings, but this will be specifically for facilities and more information will come out on that. So please, as board members, I think it's very important that we're all there. It will be a notice meeting like we do for strategic plans, so hopefully we all can attend. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, I just, early before today's meeting, I sent minutes from our last finance committee meeting to all members. The key highlight is we're finishing up basically the very, very, very first step of our referendum process by submitting a package of drawings and documents to the state to basically get their approval for us to hold a referendum and two, to get financing support from them where we can get a substantial amount back from the state. So that first phase of our effort is winding down, but we have a lot of work left to go. And the work will mostly shift to the community relations team at this point, but there's some background decision-making and analysis that the finance committee will continue to work on to get this to the point where the public can have a very meaningful understanding of what we're doing.
Thank you very much. Any other, John, you have anything? From instructional, instruction and curriculum and special education, we had our first meeting this week in August and our first meeting with Ms. Kraft as our, in our lead position. So, we discussed curriculum writing updates. So, some of those are on the board agenda and those were approved and things that we worked on, that were worked on over the summer, both on the secondary and elementary level. Just wanted to highlight for the elementary, there's a new math program that's K through 12 that will be implemented this year. So that's one of the highlights for that. Oh, that's for K-5 only, I'm sorry, for the math program, I apologize. Yes, I said elementary? Oh, okay, okay, sorry. K-5, let's be very clear, I'm sorry. Number two, there was a manual that was created as Mike was talking about our multi-tiered system of support for small group instruction. I think one of the things that really struck me regarding this is this is a model that had perhaps been used more, you know, K through 5. The expansion of the use of this at the high school and secondary level is, I think, a very exciting piece. And I think this is something that each teacher is going to receive a manual and they, there's some really good information about this whole process and tiered systems of support, which is going back to the district goal as well. The proposed parent academy calendar, we have pretty much something every month, covers elementary, secondary, and I think that will be up on the website soon. And again, we encourage, this is something that is just additional and this is to help parents. This is for information about different things, about college admissions, about kindergarten readiness, about things, you know, you could do with your student to, you know, to enhance their experience. So, please take advantage of it. Many of them, some of them are Zoom, some are in-person, but we really do encourage you to take advantage of it. It's a lot of valuable information and the people presenting are quite knowledgeable in their areas. So, take a look at the website when that, hopefully will be up soon. Lastly, we talked about this last year. There's a new evaluation and observation process led, the efforts by Dr. Fair, regarding reflective practice. It was a pilot program and they're moving to full implementation because it was well-received. We have approximately 130 teachers who are, you know, in the area of being highly effective teachers who would be able to participate with this program. And again, it, it's just another way and another option for teachers to participate, you know, more so in their evaluation process. And I think it's very empowering for staff to be able to have some participation in that. So, that's another thing that we discussed. Our next meeting will be in September and we'll have more to update with you. All right, that's it. Let's move on to board member remarks. Anyone? Okay. Let's take 17 old business, let's take the minutes. I need a motion on the floor, Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Gallo. I need a roll call, please, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Copeland?
Epstein?
Ms. Davinero? Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes. All right, let's take new business now. We have A to BB. I need a motion on the floor, Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Copeland. Roll call, please, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes. All right, now we have new business personnel, A to AA, AA, we have A to AA. I need a motion on the floor, Ms. Jansen, and second by Mr. Copeland. Roll call, please, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo? Yes. And a special thanks to Dr. Fair's team for getting us fully staffed and starting the school year.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes. All right, I don't think we have a need for exact, so motion to adjourn. Mr. Hughes, and second by Mr. Copeland. Have a great start to the school year, everyone, and have a good evening.